I'm going to call the Bussaras City Council Regular Meeting to Order for June 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life, to the next America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Before you are minutes from the June 4th, 2024 Regular Meeting, Regular Council Meeting. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes?
Second.
Mr. Myers moved to approve. Mr. Moritz seconded all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Reining permission for visitors to speak. Is there any visitors that would like to address council? Please state your name and address.
Write that off, 210 Ethel Street. I've got a couple of comments and a couple of questions, mostly for Mr. Gerner. 1201 Reed Street. I was up here probably a couple of years ago complaining about the house trailer there on Reed Street. Since then, Gordon Groves has put another notice over top of the other two-year-old notice to the owners to either do something with the property or get a hold of them, whatever, how that works. But two years ago, when I brought this up, Mrs. DeShawn was sitting behind me and it took her about, oh, five minutes to figure out that the owners of this property had both died. So this place is still sitting there. It's probably, I'm guessing, going on 12 years empty. When I was checking out the notice the other day, I kind of nosed around a little bit and looked, and there's a dead cat laying in the yard, flies, maggots, trash in the garage that's caving in, mattresses, TV, people are dumping rubbish in the yard. There's a pile of rocks and tree branches and whatever, what have you. I was just wondering, what can I do? What do I have to do to get this taken care of? How do I get this moved to the top of the list?
I'll have to look at that one, but probably foreclosing on the...
I keep seeing houses being torn down, and they're just bypassing this. Obviously, if it was 50 feet from your house, you'd be a little upset. Everybody'd be upset.
Right.
So I don't know how these people live beside it. I'm a block away from, half a block away. But it's just disgusting. I can't take it anymore. Tired of looking at it.
So I don't know this particulars, but on that one, the first thing we would do is look at the real estate property taxes to see...
8,304.
And when was the last payment?
I couldn't tell you. That thing's kind of hard to read.
Yeah. So when I was talking to the auditor, well, the treasurer, about when they certify them delinquent, and they gave me, but part of it is how much they owe and part of it is how long since they've paid anything, and then, you know, obviously, based upon the...
Well, the one guy in 2015.
Right, based upon the...
And he'd moved away years before that, so...
Right, and that was my point, based upon the fact that both parties are deceased. It doesn't matter if they haven't paid in six months or six years, they're not going to pay.
Right.
So that would be one that, you know, I hope maybe we can get the county to foreclose on. And then, once they foreclose, it's easier for us.
It all sounds good, but what do we do? How do we get this going?
You could call the treasurer, call the county prosecutor's office.
State county.
Yeah, here in the county, at the county's, just at the courthouse.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can I ask Mr.?
Write off a question here.
Actually, my question's for Mr. Gerner related to that. If you were to take, do you have any tools to take possession when a structure has become so delinquent?
Foreclosure. So...
Would you have any authority there to remediate anything since it's not a resident, not a house? It's a mobile home. Can you remove that as if it were a abandoned car or a pile of trash?
I don't know.
Be worth looking into.
Yeah.
At least, you know, get that biggest chunk of it done while we're waiting on the land to...
Somebody's got to do something. It's not going away.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's one of those properties that, yes, the landowners have abandoned, and so it sits there. But legally, we're not necessarily allowed to go in and do a ton of things to private property, which is typically why we wait for the foreclosure to occur, because then we've vested title in somebody that's alive that I can work with at that point.
Does foreclosure only work when it's owned by a bank?
No.
No?
No, so the bank can foreclose. If I don't pay my mortgage, the bank forecloses.
Obviously, it's owned by them.
But the county says, but clearly, they didn't have a mortgage on this, where the bank would have foreclosed, or the bank just walked away because they didn't want that property. But any lien, so, I mean, the real estate taxes are lien. If, you know, if there's other unpaid federal taxes, they could theoretically, the federal government could foreclose. They probably wouldn't, but...
So nobody's doing anything, so what do I do? You said, call the county treasurer?
Yeah, maybe we could attempt to be, to highlight how long this issue has gone on and push that to the top of their foreclosure list. And I'll talk to the prosecutor as well. I mean, he has some discretion and can hopefully help us remediate that issue.
Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Jackie Venick, 335 Amiller Drive. I just wanted to bring up, and I don't know if this has been talked about or discussed anytime soon, but I live, obviously, right down by the road that goes to the pool. Is there any plans to do sidewalks or speed bumps or some kind of control of traffic? Because I live there and I know for a fact that it is used as like a drag strip. And while kids are walking down the street during the day, on their way to the pool, they can't, I mean, they're walking in people's yard, which nobody on my street cares, but again, like, yeah, so something needs to be done down there. You can park a whole speed thing in my yard. I will allow it, so just give me a call, because it's better than me doing it out there yelling at people.
We do have one of those.
Yeah, because I'm at the age now where I'm telling people to slow down, so. Is there something that can be done there? I left messages for Mr. Starner, I think, and the mayor, to give me a call back on that, just because it was the kid, the pool was opening and there was a lot more traffic and with the kids being out of school and stuff like that, it's dangerous. I see it every single day, and I didn't let my kids get close to the road, so if we could come up with something to alleviate that, it could be as simple as, like I said, a little speed, I don't know, sign down there, let them know how fast they're actually going, slow down. Also, but it doesn't stop like the kids and the people walking on the road. I can't speak for my neighbors, but the sidewalk needs to at least happen, I would say, if you started it even at my house, which is the last house on Amiller, that gives them a place all the way down past the Baseball Diamonds and up to where you can actually get over where it's safe, because during the baseball games, softball games and everything, like, there's one going on down there right now, there's a lot of traffic and people are driving, 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 and there's also people walking, so.
Mr. Myers.
Sorry.
Can we refer that to the Traffic Commission? I know we can't do speed bumps or anything to regulate speed, but maybe consider a 90-day trial on lowering the speed limit during the summer hours.
Sure. Well, the speed limit's 25.
Right, but to my point, I've seen in some places, they make it a really weird number to catch your attention, like 11 or 13, something that isn't a normal number, and people pay more attention to that. Maybe that would be a good thing we could do.
Or maybe even just a few signs that say, like, because when we bought our house, we were pretty much like the younger family that fought until maybe an older generation, but now there's many families that live on that road with kids. My, like, my kids age six and nine, so they're wanting to ride their bikes and they're wanting, you know, and they can't ride their bikes on the road because I have to literally stand at the end of my driveway, and I've had to step out in front of traffic before wave people down, like, you are driving too fast. I've told kids driving through, they're like, slow down. I'm like, come on, these are my kids.
Mr. Myers.
So...
So why can't we do speed bumps?
It's illegal to do things that regulate speed like that. However, you can do it for safety and for, but you can't do it for speed.
I know Galleon, they've got speed bumps all through their parks.
And maybe they did it for safety.
Even flashing, like, the speed limit signs that have, like, lights around them or something, just to let you, like, no, okay, yeah, you have that downtown and it's regularly patrolled, and I'm not saying that, obviously, the cops do what they can, there's a lot of activity at Amiller, I know that, but, like, there should be a safe path for these kids to go, especially on free pool days, they get to walk up there and not have to pay.
I would assume, Mr. Myers, that the reason Galleon's able to put a speed bump in their park is their park's probably not a public right-of-way. It's probably Galleon City property, but it's not considered a right-of-way, and whatever Mr. Myers is referring to disallowing speed bumps is probably only for the public right-of-way, like the street itself.
So I don't know what to call it, but they're like cutouts, when you, like, you get on the ramp.
Oh, the rumble strips.
Rumble strips, yeah, that's it.
A long time ago, they used to have a gate right across the road, so...
You mean when the park was closed at night?
Yeah, when it was closed.
So the reason that there's no more gate there is because the blacktop needed repaved and the park was made a actual street, so that that allowed street levy funds to be used to pave it, but then you no longer could close it at night because it's considered a public street.
So can we use street levy funds to put sidewalks in?
So sidewalks is in plan?
Just didn't think about that. All the way down to the park.
What's your neighbors all think about the sidewalk?
I haven't asked them about the sidewalks. They all have a problem with the speeding. They all, I mean, literally, they'll go around the loop, right, around the park, and they'll come up to that stop sign, and they haul all the way down to that stop sign. I mean, all the way until midnight, 1 o'clock at night, every single night. School's in or not.
A traffic camera, Mr. Gerner?
No, I just, I mean, yeah, that's something to think about.
Automatically take a picture of your license plate and your speed and just in that entrance to the park area.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, the enforceability of those has been found unconstitutional.
Unconstitutional.
Unless you have a traffic pass.
Sometimes, even if that's just a conversation, it's not...
Right, so it's more of a deterrent, right?
Could happen, right?
Right, and so, yes, they're used still all over because they're a deterrent, but...
But seriously, some sort of safety, even if my neighbors don't agree with it, you can start the sidewalk at the end of my property, which is right where the, like, I think we go quite some way into the woods, but then, like, it's not that far, but start the sidewalk there. That's at least somewhere for them to get away, because they can't walk on the side by the woods really right now because of the, it's overgrown. You have to walk out onto the road to circle around to get around it.
I would really love to see the sidewalks improved in this town, however, there's no funding.
Okay, so no sidewalks, but something else? Like, police, like, I said, my yard is open, like, you can just do any kind of speed. It's not even a trap. They're not trapping them, not getting their information, they're just saying, hey, this is your speed. Like, do we have one of those?
We do. And so, a year ago, 18 months ago, Southern Avenue, people fly down Southern Avenue, I forget if it's 25 or 35 down there, but people drive 55, because, whatever. So the police take out that little thing that monitors your speed and posts it, and then they will, you know, drive through there from time to time. It's at least worth having a conversation with them, letting them know the problem.
Mrs. Shire.
Kurt, what's those speedometer things that they put on the roads that show your speed?
That's what he's talking about right now.
Oh, one of them would be good to set there, because then people would know they're being watched.
Right.
The speed has been talked about.
They can park in my driveway if you want. Like, if anything that slows them down, because they, they come, the police come through there quite often, it's just, but the summer months, it's a lot, so, sorry. I won't hold you guys up, but I am done.
Is there any other public participation?
I wanted to refer that to Traffic Commission.
I'll second that.
Have to look at reducing the speed.
I don't know if we actually have to have a vote when things go to the Traffic Commission. Do we, Mr. Gerner?
Do we? I formally request the Traffic Commission to look at it.
No, I don't think that this committee necessarily, or this council has to refer things and vote on it.
Any other public participation? I, so I had put this second letter on, this Communications and Petitions, and Vicki has informed me that she doesn't think that it should be there. I'm kind of iffy on it. I'm talking about the letter from Dean Hyde, so I'm going to let the council decide if we should just put that under New and Miscellaneous Business and have a vote here to modify this agenda and move that, or do you just want to leave it where it's at? So without a motion, I'm just going to leave it where it's at.
If I may, Kurt.
Yes, Vicki.
To elaborate, since you pointed out that I was the one that had a concern with it, my concern that I have with this email is that according to our Rules of Procedure, all letters of correspondence and/or petitions dealing only with the city government, this does not deal with the city government. Also, it says that all letters of correspondence and/or petitions for presentation must include the name and address of the author in order to be read at a public council meeting. This email does not recite the address of the individual that sent it. I have no problem with the gentleman's email. I just don't believe council is the place for it, and that's the reason why.
They are talking about doing things on public property that the city owns, being at the Amiller Park is kind of where I was coming from originally. Yes, Mr. Myers.
To your idea, I'll make a motion to alter the agenda and move that piece of communication to New and Miscellaneous Business to appease everyone.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that is moved to New Miscellaneous Business, so we're going to continue with the one letter from Service Safety Director Starner dated 6/7/2024. It's addressed to Bussaras City Council, Council President Kurt Fankhauser. Reference sidewalk adjoining property located at 502 Gay Street. Mr. President, we recently received complaints related to a partially uprooted stump and broken sidewalk resulting from storm damage at 502 Gay Street. And I'm going to add, I think this is from the tornado in May. Continuing on here, in an effort to be consistent with additional services we supplied to residents following tornado, okay, it was already there. The service garage assisted with removal of the uprooted stump in the tree lawn. However, the sidewalk remains broken and damaged per Bussaras Codified Ordinance 905. We are requesting council investigate the condition of the sidewalk to decide whether property shall be required to make necessary repairs to alleviate any safety concerns for pedestrian traffic. Thank you for consideration. Sincerely, Tommy Starner, Safety Service Director. And he has also included pictures. As you can see, there is a major damage to this sidewalk. So do we want to refer this to, which committee would that be, Mr. Gerner?
Sidewalks is plating.
And if we have to spend money, Finance Committee?
Yeah.
So do we want to refer, I'm seeking a motion to refer, yes, Mr. Myers.
I'll make a motion to refer this topic to Finance as well as Plating. In addition, I would like to refer all of Chapter 905, which includes sidewalks, to plating for the purpose of altering it. It was passed in 1964 that requires council to be involved in this. I really think that we should just take a look at changing that and allowing the administration to just do their job without our input on this topic, so I would refer all of that as a whole.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Along with that, too, the last council administration, administration, sidewalk concerns about going out past the golf course to Walmart was also an issue. That was really a big, hot topic and didn't go anywhere in the last administration council. I also think that should be part of this, too.
I think it would be, that actually might already be in committee, that particular stretch of sidewalk.
I'd be happy to amend my motion in case it was closed out as an open project so that they can discuss that as well.
I amend the second.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Myers has made a motion to refer the entire 905 ordinance in addition to the specific issue at 502 Gay Street. Is it in there already?
It's still an open project from 2019.
Okay, so we don't have to re-refer it. Okay, so we're just, you just want to refer?
This particular letter to Finance and Plating and Section 905 to Plating.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Myers has made the motion. Mrs. Sherick has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then, I also need a motion to accept and file the Communication and Petition Letter.
So I'll move.
Second.
Ms. Sherick made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. Was that all just one referral, or are they two referrals?
I would say it's two individuals, two separate. You're just thinking about how you're going to list it in Open Projects. Is there going to be one?
I would say two separate ones for Open Projects.
Okay, Standing Committee reports. Plating Committee, Mr. Myers.
No.
Anybody have any questions for the Plating Committee Chair? Seeing non-public lands and buildings chair, Ms. Sherick.
No report at this time.
Anybody have any questions for the Public Lands and Buildings Chair? Seeing none, Health and Safety Chair, Mrs. DeShawn.
At this Thursday's, June 20th, Committee Meeting, we will be reviewing and discussing a draft ordinance prepared by Law Director Gerner concerning trap, neuter, and return of feral cats. Copies of the draft ordinance have already been supplied to Committee members and Darla Lewis for their review prior to Thursday's meeting.
Does anybody have any questions for the Health and Safety Chair? Seeing none, Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers.
Nothing to report.
Does anybody have any questions for the Finance Committee Chair? Seeing none, Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman.
I have no report at this time.
Does anybody have questions for the Economic Development Chair? Any update on the JED?
I'm not been able to schedule an AM meeting with Mr. Z, as of yet.
Okay. Service Committee Chair, Mr. Moritz.
Thursday's meeting, we're going to bring up Title IX, Bussaras Codified Ordances. A lot of sections of that are going to be open for discussion Thursday.
Any questions for Service Committee Chair? Seeing none, Special Ad-Hoc Committee Chair, Mrs. DeShawn, and this is for the Ad-Hoc Rules Committee.
The Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bussaras City Council, Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 111, Council, Rules of Council, and Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 113, Ordances and Resolutions. We are in the process of scheduling another Committee meeting to discuss Ordinance Number 11-2024, which was referred back to Committee at the May 21st, 2024 Council Meeting. Tentatively, we are looking at July 1st, which is a Monday, at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. However, we are waiting to hear back from one other individual to see if that meets with her schedule. But as soon as we have confirmed the day and the hour, I will let Miranda know, and then she will do her posting.
Does anybody have any questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee Chair? Seeing none, Special Ad-Hoc Committee Chair, Mr. Myers, and this is for the Property Maintenance.
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Myers? Seeing none, Traffic Commission, Mr. Mayor Truca.
We have nothing right now, but I would be more than happy to entertain the All-Knower Park speed line.
Any questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none, need a motion to accept Committee reports collectively.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report of City Officers, Mayor Truca.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration would like to thank Kurt Fankhauser for installing additional cameras at the Ball Diamonds at All-Knower Park, cameras at the All-Knower Pool, Palanice Light and Millennial Park, which is the mirror on Square, City Parking Lot Number Three, behind the Crazy Fox, the lot east of Dillinger's. The Bussaras Police Department now can view these multiple locations from their dispatch stations. Bussaras Police Department dispatchers have the control and the ability to view and record on these cameras. This will be a great crime-fighting tool to be able to see in real time. Mr. Fankhauser provided these services free of charge, and to go along with it, there was damage at the yard park down on Warren Street. They've cut the backdrop with a knife, they turned around and damaged, broke the taillights out on the Rowers Festival trailer, I think it's for the Queens, I believe, maybe? It's the blue trailer.
It's for the, Mr. Millheim keeps all the sound equipment.
Okay. Oh, showed up down there today with the police early this morning, and they had to cut the tarp that covers up the steel structure below the stage. And further investigation, we found out that it was done a week ago already. And so, right now, the police are investigating the different cameras in the area. There's multiple cameras in the area, so they're looking into it right now. And so, that's, the administration would like to also announce new hours for the All-Knower Pool. Because of the great community support from the citizens of Bussaras, the All-Knower Park Pool is now open daily from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Pool passes will be available to be purchased on Thursday, June 20th, 2024. These passes will be sold at the All-Knower Park Pool only. We will not be booking pool parties at this time. Please make sure to like our Facebook page, All-Knower Park Pool, to stay updated. And then, I have a few add-ons, or one add-on in particular. I'd like to say thank you to the garden clubs that are, have hung the beautiful hanging baskets downtown, and they've spruced up the square, the islands on Square and Royal Street. I'd like to say thank you, and to go along with it, I had received a phone call or a text message from Aaron Sherick about the flags that are not hanging properly in the downtown area, and that might be on in the city electrician. He will be going down through the main drag, and when he sees the flag hanging up, you know, like it's wrapped around the flagpole multiple times, he will take his bucket truck and unfurl the flag and let it hang correctly. So that will be taken care of, that will be a daily thing for him to cruise and look for flags and stuff like that in his free time. Along with it, I'd like to say thank you to the Anvets Post 27. Harold Mannering had got ahold of me on Monday, and he said that he would be proud and happy to give the city of Bussaras picnic tables. He has 34 picnic tables that he would like to donate to the city, and so I readily said yes and accepted it wholeheartedly. We could put them at different locations, maybe at Pine's Marsh, as well as some of the additional ones on the front porch. ones on the front porch, here at City Hall, as well as the art park, and wherever else maybe you guys would think of. It's a wonderful thing that is given to him. Give the Ambests a giving that is free of charge. With that, I have no more to report. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mayor Truca? Mrs. DeShawn?
I have no questions, but I believe that I speak for all of council, that we would like to also say thank you to the All-Miller Parks Pool sponsors. This week, Free Swim, beginning Tuesday, June 18th through Saturday, June 22nd. We have on Tuesday and Wednesday, the sponsors being XT Innovations, Thursdays, Rick's Sewer and Drain, Friday, Lors Toing and Recovery LLC, and Saturday, the Holiday Inn Express and Suites. Again, a big thank you.
Mr. Me?
For $72, the seven of us could sponsor a day, too.
Excuse me?
For $72 apiece, for the seven of us, we could sponsor a day, too. If you're interested.
Well, the way that would work, so...
If that's not a conflict of interest.
Ms. Alanas is still looking for future sponsors. They're not... they're just going to get them lined up ahead of time so that the next spell of a hot weather streak, they'll be ready to go to have these free days. So if you guys would want to do that, I mean, I suppose you could... If you want to, as Bussaras City Council, the seven of you...
It's just an idea.
Right.
We can hook up with Miranda later on.
Any other questions for the mayor? I just wanted to follow up on one thing. It's the first thing that the mayor talked about there. I want to publicly thank Shawn Ridgway of Dillinger's and Brian Rockwell of the Crazy Fox for allowing their cameras to be used by the police department. They're on their property, so hopefully when the new building owner buys Dillinger's, they'll allow them to. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Mr. Starner, Safety Service Director's report.
Sorry, I have no report at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for the Service Director? Okay, Law Directors' report, Mr. Gurnard?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for the Law Director? Moving on, Auditor's report?
No report. No report.
No report? No referrals?
No.
Oh, my. You guys really want to get out of here? Any questions for the auditor? Treasurers' report, we have one dated May 2024 in the packet.
I'll move to accept it.
I... okay, Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The police chief is not with us. The fire chief has a report for May 2024, Fire EMS.
Make a motion to accept and file the fire report?
Second.
Mr. Myers, Mrs.... Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded it. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? We have accepted the fire report for May 2024. Motion to accept city officers' reports. Need a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Maritz made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Visitors' input regarding reports of standing special committees and city officers. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have proposed ordinance 28-2024, amendments to Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1187.01D and Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1187.03A. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 1187.01 entitled accessory buildings and/or structures under Chapter 1187 entitled additional residential district standards under Title 11 entitled additional zoning requirements under Part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio, and amending and supplementing Section 1187.03 entitled home occupations under Chapter 1187 entitled additional residential district standards under Title 11 entitled additional zoning requirements under Part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio. Proposed ordinance 29-2024, it's appropriations ordinance. Amending and supplementing ordinance number 50-2023 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $12,400 to the contractual services line item within the general government category within the Program 7 general government subparagraph within the general fund, and finally appropriating from unappropriated park and recreation land funds, the sum of $5,000 to the contractual services line item within the lands and buildings category within the park and recreation land subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 226, it's the police and fire equipment levy, Part 2. A resolution determining to proceed to submit to the elections of the City of Bussaras the question of additional 3.25 mil tax levy for the purpose of, one, providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, or other fire equipment and appliances for the establishment and maintenance of lines or of fire alarm communications, for the purchase of ambulance equipment, and for the provision of ambulance, paramedic, and other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or firefighting company, or for the payment of other related costs. And, two, providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, and buildings used directly in the operation of a police department pursuant to Sections 5705.03 and 5705.19JJ of the revised code and declaring an emergency.
Any wish to accept those as first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded it. All in favor? All opposed? It passed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Nobody is coming to the podium?
Mr. President?
Yes, Becky?
When can I ask a question?
Regarding the first reading?
Or make a comment about the legislation? Yes, the first reading.
You can do that right now.
Okay. Proposed resolution 226, 2024, which is the police and fire equipment levy, Part 2. I'm wanting to recall that at the last council meeting, Law Director Gurnard indicated that we would have three readings for this particular piece. And at the third reading, we could then declare it an emergency. But by doing the three readings, this would give the public... And I wasn't sure, because this is talking about and declaring an emergency, if that needed to be...
Is that just so that it went into effect immediately after that meeting that it was voted on instead of waiting to 30 days?
Correct. Correct.
Because normally legislation is passed, doesn't go into effect until 30 days after it's passed. But I think there was a deadline with the Board of Elections, which is why... So you're getting three readings, but then it goes into effect immediately after the meeting of the third reading, assuming that the mayor signs it. And I believe he does intend to sign it. So does that clear that up?
So how are we passing this?
So you just passed, accepted the first reading, so you could move to table it for a second reading, hold it to a first reading at this point?
And I would do that...
Right now.
Okay.
I don't know, yeah, right now would be...
So I'm moving to table resolution number 226-2024 to a first reading only.
I'll second that.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We can do that tonight, though, right? That's the first.
We just did.
That's what's established, but...
Yeah, we read it for the first reading.
All opposed?
No.
It passes, so it is tabled. It will not be voted on tonight. Referring back to the originating committee, is proposed ordinance 28-2024 back to plating, proposed ordinance 29-2024 back to finance, proposed resolution 226-2024 back to finance. Committee report on pending legislation, Plating Committee.
Proposed ordinance 28-2024 amendments to the BCO 1187.01D and BCO 1187.03A. It's favorable.
Finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 29-2024, the appropriations, and finance is favorable to proposed resolution 226-2024, the police and fire equipment levy, Part 2.
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 29-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the first. Mr. Maritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman? No.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 29-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman? No.
Ordinance number 29-2024 is duly adopted. Is 28-2024 not on here?
It was an emergency.
And we have tabled the last one there, so moving on, old and unfinished business. Anybody have any? New miscellaneous business? Mr. Mayor?
I would like to invite everybody to go to the Antique Farm Machinery Show that will be starting in the next couple of days. I think it starts maybe Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday noon.
Thursday noon.
Thursday, okay. Thursday noon, okay. And also, I'd like to invite everybody to the Colonnus Chicken Barbecue tomorrow. They're the ones that support the fireworks, as well as they're the ones that have done the splash pad at All-Miller Park. And so we would like to say, hopefully you eat chicken and don't eat beef tomorrow. Thank you.
Any other new miscellaneous business? The Service Director has shown me that the slide in Crestline may be for sale because Crestline has filled their pool in with dirt. And it's a very nice slide. I would almost ask that maybe this be referred to Public Lands and Building and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Me seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The only final thing is, is this letter that I had... This letter was sent to me by email by Dean Hyde. It's about the Bussaras High School class of 1989. They're honoring their departed classmates with tree planting ceremony at All-Miller Park. On June 21st, 2024, at 1:00 PM at All-Miller Park, the class of 1989 Bussaras High School invites all who wish to join them in honoring the memory of their departed classmates. This ceremony not only memorializes the past, but also reinforces the enduring bonds of friendship and community that defined the Bussaras High School class of 1989. If you have any questions, please contact Dean Hyde, phone number 614-789-9833, or his email address is dean, D-E-A-N, at deanhyde, D-E-A-N-H-E-I-D, dot com. With that, I... okay, what referrals do we have?
We have 502 Gay Street sidewalk to plating and finance, Chapter 905, the Bussaras Codified Ordinance to plating, and the potential purchase of a slide for the pool to Public Lands and Building and Finance.
I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:46 PM.